Good afternoon. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the school board meeting this Tuesday, June 19, 2018. If you wish to speak during the hearing of citizens, please pick up a card in the back of the chambers, print your name and topic clearly, and return a card to our board -- oh my goodness, our Board Assistant Kathy Tompkins. At the appropriate time, I will call you up to speak. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda today, we have our special presentations. I would like to welcome STAR Coordinator Patricia McGraw and the STAR students in the audience today. STAR stands for Students Taking Active Roles, which is a training program created to encourage youth to take active roles in their community. If you'll help me welcoming them. Also under special presentations, today we have the pleasure to recognize the Venice High School baseball team who have earned the title of FHSA 7A State Baseball Champions. I would like to invite James Slaton, District Athletic Director, to the podium. Oh, Slaton, sorry. I always want to put an "N" in there, apologies.
All right, I want to thank Dr. Bowden and the Board for recognizing these amazing accomplishments of these young men. It's a tough thing to win a state title, and I think going into this season, I think Craig's going to talk a little bit about it, a young team, pretty surprising that they're sitting here right now, but I think it says a lot about these guys. This year in the district has been pretty amazing. They've concluded the last championship. This year, we've had four team state titles, seven individual state titles, three academic state titles. So this year has been an amazing year. I want to congrats, give a congrats to Coach Faulkner. He's got an amazing staff as well. I know a couple of coaches are here. This is his fifth state championship. So it's pretty impressive. And to go along with that, he's going to be inducted into the FHSA Hall of Fame coming up. But I think, as you hear Coach talk, more so than winning those championships, he's excited about building champion men. And he's talked about this a lot, that he really believes in three things, and it's developing them as players, as people, and also as students. And I think they exemplify that. And as a district, I think if we would have our coaches exemplify what Coach Faulkner's all about, it would go a long way. I would also like to thank Principal Eric Jackson and Athletic Director Pete Dombrowski for their support and leadership with athletics. And at this time, Mr. Dombrowski is going to come speak.
James said we were surprised. We weren't surprised at all, were we Craig? You know, we've been up here so much this year, I feel like a board member without the headaches.
You can have a seat.
We're really honored. We did some research just to let you know, and at Venice High School, we're really proud of this stat. We went through the FHSA, called some old timers, and Venice High School, as far as we can find, is the only public high school to win three state championships for a team sport in the state of Florida. So that was really a surprise. But there's no surprise when it comes to baseball, when people say, what makes Venice so good at athletics? All you gotta do is point to Craig Faulkner and his coaching staff. Those guys have been together since 1999. They exemplify what a coach and athlete should be. They give back to the community. They work hard in school. They represent not only Venice High School, the community of Venice, but Sarasota County and Sarasota County schools. Craig's a great guy. He's done a lot. He's 7A Coach of the Year this year, Hall of Fame, state championship. It's like he thinks he's at Disney World. It's been great. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce the state championship, Craig Faulkner, and he'll introduce his team.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Pete. Thank you, Dr. Bowden. It's very exciting to be here, still on cloud nine. You know, we asked these young men, who some of them couldn't be here today, they're traveling, playing travel ball, but we asked these young men, 256 days before the last game of the year, to change the me-too-we, and to become an ingredient, and to do all those little things, be great students, be great in the community. We put over 1,000 hours into our community, serving different nursing homes and things like that. So have so much to be proud of these guys, and to play the game the way they play it with integrity, hard work, hustle, the little things that they've done all year long, makes me really proud. Very excited to be the coach of these young men, very grateful to have leadership, Mr. Jackson, Principal Jackson, and the leadership, Pete Dombrowski, in our school. You know how much they support us and allow us to do things, to honor our community and bring people in. So pretty special for us to be here. Never gets old, and I really have a lot to thank for these young men, the effort that they put in, the non-selfish, giving attitude that they have all year, made it really, really fun to coach. My coaching staff is second to none. Most of them have been there over 20 years. We've stayed together and worked together. I'd like to bring up now Jose Velez and Ray Sinabaldi. Just two of our 12 guys that volunteer, most of them volunteer their time giving back to these guys, and they're all men of character, and these two guys are no exception to that. So I'm pretty proud of them. So I'd like to introduce my players. First, Senior Captain Miss DiNofrio, on up. Captain Chase Doyle. Senior Chase Latford. Senior Justin Henley. Junior Josh Kinker. Junior Connor Miller. Junior Bradley Miller. Sophomore Jacob Faulkner. Sophomore Ryan Markey. Sophomore Matt Dussetti. Freshman Aiden Corn. And freshman Michael Robertson. I have a shirt for all the dignitaries up here. I gave one to you already.
I like the coin. The coin's awesome. I know that the board members likely want to make a couple comments. Just let them get back to their seats, although I know they're ready to get run with their summer. No worries. That's totally fine. Mrs. Goodwin.
I just ask a question. The Coach Faulkner told me that there were eight seniors on the team, but, and I know that the ring is really important, so I'll get to hear about the ring ceremony and so forth, which is, I think, great. But tell us a little bit about the mission trip that you just took, because I think that's really important.
Yeah, every other year, we go on a mission trip, and it is voluntary, it's not mandatory by any stretch of the means. And last couple of years, we've taken the volleyball team as well. We've gone to, this year, we went to Dominican Republic. We went to Cuba two years ago, Panama, two years previous to that, Costa Rica. And what we do there is we play games. We bring, we brought 90 big boxes of umpire's gear, baseball gear, clothes, medical supplies. We take some doctors in town with us. Pastors from our church go. And we just, we love on the people. We give them food, we play with the kids, we went to two orphanages, we play games every single day. It's just an unbelievable experience, so that our kids at Venice High School and Sarasota County have such great facilities and such great schools, to go see something like that in a third world country, the Dominican Republic, really makes them feel blessed to be where we're from. It really humbles all of us. So it's an unbelievable experience every time we do that, and it just kind of helps me as a coach to remind them, you know, remember when we were there and what that's like. And we're working on our field a little bit, it's not that big a deal when we're, you know, playing on the fields that we played on. So it's a really special thing that we do.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Robinson.
On character and not just the athletics of it. So, you know, the student athletes, and Eric Jackson is always, you know, harping on that fact, and so I really do appreciate it. And it was amazing, that parade that you had, and how the whole city came out. But just to give you a little taste of how much people support the Venice baseball team, I just got to tell you this. They brought us up and they gave us these commemorative coins that they handed out to all the players in the first day, so they knew what they had to focus on. And we came off, Bridgette and I, and the Chief of Police was there, and he didn't have a coin. And so we asked Bridgette, hey, can I look at your coin? And she was like, hmm, I don't think so.
No, I thought he was trying to shake my hand.
Sure, she thought she was shaking. So I was like, yeah, sure, you can look at my coin. So he takes it, looks on the other side, and then he puts it in his pocket. And he goes, thanks. I'm like, well, he has a gun, so. But I'm just telling you, that's how much people, people were, you know, coming out to support, the whole community's out there supporting Venice, which is a little bit different than in some of the other communities throughout the state. And so, but it's because of leadership like you and your coach that inspires that. So thank you very much for not just winning titles, but building men. So, and Craig's also there at the other sports. If you go to a volleyball game, he's out there supporting the other teams and not just concentrating just on this one thing. He's out there supporting all facets of Venice and the character of these children. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Well, I don't know if this is a question for you or just Scott Lempy. I want to know what they kind of pumped into that water in that school when we rebuilt it, you know, that. But I too want to echo what Mr. Robinson said. I mean, not only are you producing winning teams and doing all these wonderful things, like habla española, I suppose, too, but your grades. I mean, your kids are all around excelling. And then we saw this morning, you know, what y'all got in scholarships, too. Not just the baseball team, but the whole school. I mean, I think they, didn't they get as many scholarships as Pineview did? I mean, you know, we're just really kicking butt down there in Venice. You've got so much to be proud of, but so do we. You make us look good, and thank you.
Thank you. It's such a great school to be a part of, and it comes right down from Mr. Jackson and, you know, the assistant principals, you know, they're always so supportive, and especially in the classroom. And yeah, I'm very proud of these young men for what they do in the classroom and being a part of Venice High School. I was, I'm a graduate of Venice High School back in '83. So to come back and teach for the last 23 years and be a part of my alma mater is pretty special.
Well, I'm proud of the staff we have down there, too. Thank you.
And I would echo that as well. I feel as though Venice is just this really amazing community, but you guys have tremendous leadership at Venice High School. And you are, you're building, they're great at athletics, but you're building strong future leaders, all well-rounded. And so we're very, very grateful for all the work you do and make us very, very proud. I do, I apologize, I do want to add that Mrs. Zucker is on the call here. She has actually had a graduation, so I know, Dr. Bowden, you also wanted to speak, but she's on mute unless she wants to speak at this point.
Can't tell you.
Mrs. Zucker. We'll wait for that awkward. Okay, so Dr. Bowden.
So Pete, you answered my question, is, you know, as I've watched you make your state title run, I started to think, is there a school in recent memory that has had three team sports win in the same year? And I was fortunate enough to be at your graduation, and I know that your senior class president took great pride in that. That graduation class said, you know, not only has this never been done before, but we're going to be hard to top going forward. And so, you know, the class of 2018 at Venice High School, that senior class, I know has taken their identity around your athletic achievements, but also academically and through the arts. And Coach, you and I have gotten a chance to spend some time together, and I'm just thoroughly impressed with what you're doing with those young men and your accomplishments, not just on the field, but off.
Thank you, Dr. Bowden. Appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much. Next up on special presentations is a, not on the agenda, but our Board, together collectively, wanted to recognize a very, very special person to this community, to the school district, to this Board, as he prepares for his retirement at the end of this month, and that is Mr. Scott Lempy. If you could come up here for a moment. Sure, I just, I wanted to give the opportunity, I know last board meeting, you had the opportunity to chair or to sit in as superintendent for the day. And so I know a lot of comments were made at that time, but from an official signing off, we wanted to present you with something as a token of our appreciation of the impact you've had on each individual board member, again, as this district and so many students and staff. I'm sure that they're, we hope you won't go far. You have been, quite frankly, personally to me, someone who I've learned so much about has always been able to be candid, and really, you are focused on what matters, and I appreciate that so much. And I hope that we can always collectively remember the words that you said, is finding the common ground and the common good of what we're all here for, even if we have different ideas on how to get there. So I greatly appreciate your service. I wanted to offer a token of appreciation, but I also wanted to see if the other board members want to make a comment real quick, and then we can take a photo. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I've already cried once, I think, at the last school board meeting, and I don't really.
Hi, this is Caroline.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't know if anybody was ahead or I was trying to find my mute button. Scott, I would just like to thank you for your dedication and loyalty. You have been so with us, this district. There isn't anything that you don't know and can't do as it pertains to this district. I can't begin to tell you how much I will miss you. You're not only colleague, but you're my friend. So we will keep in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I just want to say that in the 15 or so years that you have been here, you have exemplified excellence in everything you do. And I know that you've done that all your life. You've done that as a husband and a father, and you've certainly done that as an administrator. Your shoes are so big to fill, and your loss will be such a large loss for us. But I want to wish you great happiness, good health, joy, fun with you and your beautiful wife and family, because you deserve all good things. Get out on that boat, get out to San Diego, enjoy those daughters, those grandchildren, and have a wonderful, wonderful, happy life, because we will always love you, and you will always have a place here. So please stop by, keep in touch, and know that, you know, you're always thought very highly of and will always be remembered. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown.
Well, the time has gone way too quickly. I mean, I can't believe, well, it's been 15 years, I've only worked with you for 12, but I've watched you for 15. Amazing, the type of trust that you've built within the staff and within the community. I mean, I've seen you take on some tough, tough issues and bring everyone to consensus. Somebody was saying there was going to be some event for you, some party for you, and then I got a notice that Scott Lempy's retirement was canceled. And I said, oh, great. Yay, we've got so many more things to do. But they said, no, we just meant the event was canceled, we're, you know, he's still leaving us. But for a moment there, I was excited and happy. But yeah, you will be missed. You've done a lot, but I understand you've been making inroads and helping people move on to fill those empty spaces you're going to leave. And just leave your phone number. We may need to call you.
Mr. Robinson.
I really appreciate the time that I've had with you since I've been on the Board, you know, your guidance, but I want to harp him back to when I was running for office and I was sitting out in the seats, and there was a group of employees came, and they were disgruntled, and they had an issue. And then when they were done with their talk, they all funneled out like most people do. But Scott Lempy, he didn't stay. He funneled back out there with them. And I went back out there just to see what he was going to do, and he listened to them. He did something that they wanted. And not only did he listen to them, he was able to find some sort of common ground. And maybe they didn't feel like he was on their side, but they understood that he was listening, and then he was going to reach a goal, which he did, a resolution that was good for all. And that was because he saw an issue and a problem, and he didn't just sit there. He followed them out and wanted to hear what they had to say. But I really wanted to, it sounds like a repeat of what happened two weeks ago, but I do want to thank his wife. I've never met you, but I can tell you how thankful I am that, my God, I mean, it doesn't, nights, weekends, I mean, nine to five means nothing to Scott Lempy. So I'm sure that you've had to sacrifice so much of that time, and so I just want to tell you, on behalf of the school district, how much I appreciate it. I mean, it goes without notice that he knows no boundaries. I mean, when something needs to be fixed and something needs to be done, he's not the guy who's just going to sit in that chair. He's going to run towards the problem and try to seek resolution and find a common ground. So I just want to tell you, thank you for sharing him with our district.
And I will, I'll close with that as well. I think that Eric, Mr. Robinson, made a very good point, that there has been not one time, and you are COO of this very large district, and anytime there is a constituent issue or concern, you handle them, you turn them around very quickly and address their concerns. And I think that's a really important part of our role. We're, I mean, customer service is a component of what we do, and you are a tremendous leader in that. So you will be sorely missed, and your legacy will live on, very, everlasting. I wanted to present this to you. I know that there's another plaque here, and I know human resources from them as well, so I don't know if there was anything else, but if you guys want to come down real quickly and take a photo. We can Photoshop Caroline. And just so you know, there is a little party after this board meeting. Cake to follow in the meeting adjoining conference room, cake and ice cream. Cake, I don't know if there's ice cream, but, party, fun. Did you want to make any comments?
Of course.
Of course.
You can't give me a mic and not expect me to comment. I guess I said kind of the meaningful things that I wanted to say at a board meeting two weeks ago, so I'll try not to repeat that. But as I've listened to you say things, I'm somewhere between humbled and guilty. And part of the reason I say that is because, and I think I used the phrase last time we were together, standing on the shoulders of giants, but I have really had the opportunity to do that. And whether I'm talking about bus drivers or custodians or food service workers, or I'm talking about the directors that they work for, my job has been pretty easy. I learned a long time ago that in a leadership position, there's a couple of things you need to do. You need to hire good people, you need to give them the tools that they need to do their job, and they need to get the heck out of their way. And that's a pretty simple thing to do, if you can find a way to do it, and I've had the ability to do that. I know that Jody is in the room today. I just think he's an example of the kinds of people that I've been lucky enough to work with. So I appreciate the words you've said, but they weren't because of anything I did, other than to be smart enough to get out of that young man's way and let him do what he needs to do. My wife and I have talked a lot about how, however you define winning the lottery, we have. And I think if I put my professional time, whether it was military or here, on a scale, and on one side of the scale, I put kind of the value of the contributions that maybe I made to my organization, and the other side of the scale, I put all of the things I got back from being part of either the military or the school board, I'm not sure which side of that scale would be the heaviest. And so we look at the opportunities we've had, and, you know, our own health, and our kids, and our grandchildren, our professional opportunities, and I don't know what the definition of winning the lottery is, but we did a long time ago, and we've just been able to carry that on. I'm not going to say a lot about my wife, because I won't get through it. Eric, this is your fault. But that's the Rock. I'm sorry. So we have a, we have a sign that hangs, right now, today, we have a sign that hangs on the front door of our house, and it says, "Home is where the Air Force sends us." And underneath that are what, 13 or 14? So every time we moved, we'd get a new plaque and we'd hang it underneath there. And so on our front door, you can kind of see military career in a box. And I think about the price that my family had to pay to make all that happen. And so, you know, the hours here were relatively simple compared to, I remember one, just one quick war story. October the 18th, I remember, because it was my brother's birthday, I got called back to work, and my boss said, "I got good news and bad news." And I said, okay. And he said, "Well, the good news is, I want to put you in command, and I want you to do it in Europe." At the time, we were in San Antonio, Texas. And I said, "Well, that's wonderful. What could be the bad news?" And he said, "You need to be on station by the end of the month." 12 days. We had two kids in school, we owned a house, we owned a couple of cars, and I had to go to Europe. How do you do that without a supporting cast around you? How do you do that without a supporting cast around you? And my kids, I always wondered how bad the military screwed up my kids. Apparently, they survived, but Tracy's been the rock through all that. And you guys know her history over the last 10 years, so inspiration to me for sure. So probably said more than I need to, but thank you very much for all you've done for me.
So I wanted to keep my comments separate from the board, and I know that the staff is going to take time here in the next week or so to say a proper goodbye, but I just wanted to thank you for your advice and counsel as I moved into this superintendent role. I was at the mall this weekend, and I saw this gentleman walking towards me, and his shirt said, "Retired." "I'm free to do," and on the back it said, "Whatever my wife tells me to." And so I thought about you. I have to tell you, you have been successful in everything that you've ever done, except retirement. You've tried this once before. And so I have a hard time projecting you into retirement, because you're just 100 miles an hour all the time. So if he starts annoying you, just send him back to us. We'll take him back. We'll take him back. But I did want to make a small presentation to you. I know that with your military history, that this would have a significance to you, but we have started a recognition program around a unit coin. And so as superintendent, I wanted to present to you the school district coin, and I know it will go in your collection of the units that you have proudly served in your career.
So for those of you who don't know the tradition of the military coin or the unit coin, if you get one of these, you carry it with you all the time. Somebody can coin you, and if they have one, they drop it on the table, and you produce yours. And if you don't, you buy a round. And if you do, they buy a round. So that's kind of the tradition. Dr. Boden, this is very meaningful. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You've got to have one. You don't have to have everyone.
That is a hard act to follow. Next up, we have the superintendent's report.
Yes, I have a number of items, and I'll move quickly through that. You have a number of items tonight on your agenda that allow us to move forward on the implementation of our police department. I did receive a briefing between the workshop and the convening of the board meeting, and I just wanted to let you know where we are on that timeline. Our first flight or officer, or hiring of officers, we had projected that there will be two flights of hiring, and that if we could hit the mark of 10 to 12 in each one of those flights. We have concluded the first round of interviewing, and we've identified 20 candidates that will be moving to the next phase, which means we'll begin background checks. That's a two-step process. Our district has a background check that we do, that we would do like any other employee, be they classified or instructional. And once we have done that background check, we will be extending offers to those individuals. I have to tell you, I, in receiving my briefing, just totally impressed with the background of the officers that were on that board. I had a chance to sit in on one of the interviews this afternoon, and let me tell you what the gentleman said, because I think it provides a correct focus. He is a retiree. He'll be retiring from his agency in another state in the next two weeks. Had already made a commitment to come to Sarasota. Is going to enroll one of his children in one of our middle schools, enroll one of his children in one of our high schools. He took an opportunity before the interview concluded to thank the panelists for what we were doing and standing up a police department, because he was going to have kids in our system and believed in the mission of the department. And that's the quality of individuals that we've attracted. When you go down the board, of the 20 names that are on the board, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, that 14 of them currently hold FDLE certification. Six of them are eligible for FDLE certification once they complete a transition course, because they're currently certified in another state. In addition to that, we have the three sergeants selected and queued up, ready to begin background checks. And so excited about the developments. Want to thank, I've mentioned Tom Buchanan. Tom's standing in the back of the room. Tom has been our point person on recruitment and has done a wonderful job of working this applicant base. Gives me great confidence in our ability to hire the officers that we need to staff the 21 schools on August 13th. So Tom, thanks for coming out of retirement to help us out. He's doing great work for us. Great work.
I know you've got to do that.
I know Tom's in charge. Everything's going to be all right. Just want to give you an update. Our meeting last Tuesday, in which we convened law enforcement partners, the takeaway from that meeting was that I was to schedule meetings with the city manager and the chief of police, as well as the sheriff and the county administrator. I've been successful in scheduling three of those four meetings. Met yesterday with the Venice Police Department. We have concluded contract negotiations there. Things went very smooth. We'll have two officers at Venice High School, one at Venice Elementary School. We have based that contract on what we believe the average it would take if we did an officer ourselves. And so we've agreed to compensate Venice at $65,000 per, as opposed to looking at a 50-50 split or an 80-20 split. They preferred to deal in flat dollar amounts, and so we'll be compensating them at $65,000 an officer for three officers. And our commitment to them is, because they were able to come in at that cost, they want those officers to stay in the Venice schools for years to come. And so unlike other municipalities where we have a year-two implementation, in which if we had to go to an 80-20 split, we would ultimately replace them with our own officers, our commitment to Venice has been, as long as they continue their cost-sharing agreement, we'll continue to allow them to staff those schools. And I can tell you, that's been very, very important, not only to the Venice Council, but to the citizens of Venice, and that was relayed to me by the city administrator. I'll be meeting tomorrow with the city of Sarasota, and I am on the 26th. I'll be meeting with Northport. I'm not currently on the calendar with the sheriff. One other item before I conclude is, we agreed mutually to move my annual evaluation to July 17th. You'll be receiving the documents from my secretary. That's a two-step process in which we'll meet one-on-one and then have discussion at the July 17th. And so just to anticipate the scheduling of that. In regards to the sheriff's office contract, we have received an offer from the sheriff. He has submitted a contract to us. I believe that we owe him an answer on that. His budget has been submitted. I know he is going tomorrow before the county commission, and so I have some documents for reference for you. I submitted these to you electronically, and I just want to talk about the documents and quite honestly, just have an open conversation and get some guidance from you on how to proceed. We also made these documents available at the back of the room for those in the audience. It is not currently on our agenda, and it would be dependent if you wanted to authorize any action or just have a conversation here as part of superintendent's report. But included in your folder are three documents and a short spreadsheet. The first, as a point of reference, is our 2017-18 contract with the sheriff. The next document that you have is the proposal from the sheriff to provide services for And then the final is a proposal that, as your superintendent, I would recommend that we, as a district, make for services with the sheriff's office. The first part of the conversation is to form and content. Our agreement for 1718 forms the basis for what I believe our offer should be to the sheriff's office for 1819. And so I have based that on our current contract. This was negotiated between the superintendent and the sheriff. It has evolved over the years. It has formed the background, the backbone of our school resource officer program. The contract that we have received from the sheriff is not subject to bargaining. It was a contract that was sent. We really had not a lot of say in the development of that contract. And so my advice to you is that as we respond to the sheriff, that we work from the contract that we currently have in place. The last item you have there is a spreadsheet, and I just want to take you through that document. In the 1718 school year, we had a cost-sharing agreement with the sheriff, in which he provided 11 officers, two sergeants, and a lieutenant, and he provided that for a cost of $1.5 million. Our part of that agreement was $749,000, and the sheriff bore $749,000 in that. As you look at the spreadsheet, the sheriff's offer to us is for us to bear 100% of the cost of all 14 officers assigned from the sheriff's office to the school district. I can tell you, I have some issues with that, and we can talk that through. These are 12-month employees of the sheriff. They would work between 250 and 260 days a year. We would need them in our schools if you base it on our instructional contract to include the 180 days of school, pre-planning, professional development holidays, somewhere around 196 days. There's been a lot of conversation to include last Tuesday about equity in the contracts that we enter into with the various agencies. And I can tell you, we have to own that, is that we currently have four contracts with three police departments and the sheriff's department. Three of those contracts are 50-50 cost-sharing agreements. One of them is an 80-20 cost-sharing agreement. And I can tell you, if I were the sheriff or I were one of the city managers, in which I was in a 50-50 cost-sharing agreement and saw that I had another contract for similar services at 80-20, I too would say, "Wait a minute. Why am I paying 50-50 while someone else is paying 80-20?" And so my expectation tomorrow, when we meet with the city of Sarasota, who currently has the 80-20 agreement, is that they will propose to us to continue an 80-20 cost-share. And so that 80-20 number, you have probably heard resonate over the last couple of weeks or probably the last month or so, because that is really what people have latched on to, which is, you paid the sheriff 50-50, you paid Venice 50-50, you paid Northport 50-50, but you paid the city of Sarasota 80-20. And so my recommendation would be that we go back to the sheriff and say, "We should anchor our agreement under the principle of equity," and that is an 80-20 cost-share. That would shift the cost from the sheriff's office to us. Now, when you look at the agreement that we have with the city of Sarasota, if we use it as our anchor point, that contract includes three officers and one quarter of one sergeant. And so that is the supervision that they've asked for. In Venice, we've contracted for three officers and no supervision. In Northport, there are four officers, and there's not an exact, but it is a partial sergeant. To enter into a contract with 11 officers to include two sergeants and a lieutenant would put us in a position that we were not being equitable to our other partners. So my recommendation, and I also want to touch on, with the city of Sarasota, which includes Sarasota High School and Booker High School are within the jurisdiction of the city of Sarasota, because of the 80-20 cost-share agreement, we assigned only one officer to those campuses. Over the years, we've received overtures from the city to say, "We'd like to put a second officer specifically at Sarasota High School." And we have said, under an 80-20 cost-share agreement, that we couldn't go to a second officer. So for consistency, the sheriff currently serves 10 schools with 11 officers. My recommendation is that we ask him to serve 10 schools with 10 officers, which means that we would reduce, from Riverview High School, two officers to one, and that we enter into an agreement for supervision with two sergeants. And so you see, our current offer from the sheriff is for a total headcount of 14 at a cost of the district of $1,558,000. My recommendation to you, and it is purely that, a recommendation, is that you reject that offer from the sheriff and that we counter back to him on a contract for 10 officers and two sergeants at an 80% on our side of the equation. So that would be my recommendation to you. Happy to answer any questions, talk about the underlying logic, any questions that you might have, and then contemplate any action you would like to take or direction that you'd like to give me as a board.
Mrs. Brown.
I haven't had a lot of time to digest this, but what I have been digesting, and that's probably why my stomach is bothering me, I've been comparing the new contract to the old contract, and there were several things in the new contract about the interactions of the deputies with the school, and there were several things that they weren't going to be doing anymore. And, you know, like, currently under 2D1, it was the, "The school resource deputy shall act as an instructor for specialized short-term programs at the high schools when invited to do so by the principal," that they'd be available to teach students a variety of law-related presentations, drug awareness, drug education programs, and they'd be instructor for specialized short-term programs and a variety of law-related presentations, and that they would be coordinating with the principal and staff members. A lot of these things were missing in the new contract, and what we had instead was that, it seemed like it was very top-down, like, the sheriff is the one who's in charge. The sheriff is the one who's going to place these people. The sheriff was going to say what they could carry in. And I had a concern about that, because right now, it seemed like we've got a partnership, you know, the principal and the school resource officer have a good working relationship with the principals and the resource officers and the students. And I didn't want to see that go away. And I think another important thing, currently, it was in Article 10, and I don't know if you've got it in there, but Article 10 talked about good faith, the current contract. "The school board, the sheriff, and their agents and employees agree to cooperate in good faith in fulfilling the terms of this agreement. Unforeseen difficulties or questions will be resolved by negotiation between the superintendent and the sheriff or their designees." I found that missing in the new contract, and that concerned me. It's on page 10 of the old contract.
I'm sorry, for clarification, I didn't want to interrupt you. You're talking that proposed 1819, not amended, or are you talking about 1718?
This was the 1718, and I just got this new contract-
That clause can be found in both contracts.
Yeah, it's on page six of the sheriff's. It's on page six and 11, six on one, 11 on the other.
Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
I'm looking at-
It's on page six of the sheriff's contract, page 11 of ours.
Maybe I was looking at an older contract. You're talking about the newest one. I was looking at one, I think, that I got in April, was the one that I had. But I was missing that good faith one. The one that I saw was that the sheriff would work with the school board, not with the superintendent. And I thought that was a big difference, and I didn't think that would be a good way of working things, because as we know, we can't work one-on-one as a school board. The school board can't make decisions. We don't draw up contracts. The sheriff needs to work with the superintendent. I know he's made some comments about, to me at least, that he wants to work with elected officials. Well, the superintendent in most counties is elected. We appoint our superintendent. We appoint our superintendent, and when you look at the charts around the state, I mean, I think they're on pretty equal footing. But as a school board, we don't make contracts. We can't have a meeting and come up with a contract with the sheriff. We have to work through our superintendent. So I would hope that we can again reach out, that ask you to reach out with the sheriff's office and have this as a starting point to move forward. And I think you make a good, you know, argument for doing the 80/20 split. If that's what we're doing with all the other entities, you know, why not, you know, with the sheriffs? And where if the sheriff had $758,000 in his budget before, rather than zero out the line item, we're asking him to put $180,000, and that's a $600,000 savings over what he's doing now. So I would hope that he would at least sit down and talk about this and go over the details. And I applaud you for going forward with this, at least moving on, because I find this much more acceptable than what we had with the zero.
Any comments? Mr. Robinson?
I wish we would have had this for the workshop. I mean, this morning, it's more conducive to have these type of discussions. But I just want to first thank Chair Ziegler for having that meeting next Tuesday, because it was very...
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, I'm sorry, last Tuesday, not today.
Not add any more confusion.
Okay, not any more confusion. It was very educational, and I had come away with a different perspective. I was under the impression that we were going to press pause at the end of that, but maybe I misunderstood. But I personally would like us, if that wasn't how it came out, but I would like us to see us press pause. I mean, getting handled, handled these stuff and being able to make these decisions right now, it's just, it's just too big of an issue. It was quite clear on Tuesday that there were things that we hadn't thought all the way through, and so I just want to make sure that we get it right the first time. And so it's my personal opinion that we, that we press pause on the safety and security issue and sit down with the sheriff and sit down with our partners and learn what it is that we, we need to do if we're going to do internal police force. Chief Topino talked about the length of time that it would take to hire somebody, when we were saying, you know, a three-weeks time period, and she was, she was talking 18 months, you know, trying to find out, you know, why is those discrepancies, trying to understand all the things that need to be done so that we can make sure that we get it done right the first time. So it was up to me. I would like to press pause and make sure that we get it done right the first time.
I want to be able to go through this, because these are contracts, and surely, excuse me, Mrs. Brown, you bring up a good difference. I mean, that's something we want to be able to read in advance. I think, a couple of different things. You know, I feel like Sarasota County, we were kind of, we were ahead of the curve, and listen, every district is scrambling trying to figure this out. We're not, we're not, it's not just us. But I feel concerned that there's just, and it doesn't matter who's at fault. I just feel like there's more talking back and forth than so much action. And I think that the 12th, I was very pleased with the conversation. I thought it was productive. I thought it was respectful. I thought it was focused on the bigger picture of figuring out how we, to help us as a district figure out how we go forward. I am, I get concerned, I mean, even to go back and forth and say, because I honestly don't know. I mean, I don't want to strip out a lieutenant, because I need to understand what that function is to the sheriff's department in the interconnectivity, because I don't want us to go forward with anything less than a holistic understanding of where various players' roles are. I know that this has been made public, and it certainly was said at the meeting on the 12th, that any communication and decision with the sheriff wants to be in a public meeting. And I know I shared, we talked about this yesterday, and I say, why not? I mean, we can't delay any longer, in my opinion, and we just, we can't. And I think it affords the community, who is clearly, and rightfully so, interested in this discussion. I don't think we need the political theatrics. I'm not, that's not what I'm trying to do, but let's, it affords an opportunity for there's, again, another, similar to what happened on the 12th, very clear understanding, because I want to make sure we're asking the questions that I may not be aware that we're asking, especially if we try to amend these contracts to continue on for the middle and high school. And then as it looked as the elementary, based on the 12th, I didn't necessarily understand that we, I mean, we couldn't, there was no, it wasn't a full board, so there was no decision-making, but my understanding was that there was going to be almost a, somewhat of a reverse, try to work with the various law enforcement agencies for the next year as we ramp up this police department. That was my takeaway. Again, that's the benefit of having a public meeting, because that may be my perception and not someone else's. So please feel free to correct me if I'm incorrect. I don't want to waste any more time, because I, as a, as a mom, as a taxpayer, as a board member, we are too good to not get this right. And I believe that, and I believe this community expects that. I mean, we have, we vote on approved grants, the most philanthropic community I think we have ever seen in this state, and we have no choice. We have to get this right, and we have to act like adults. We have to get around a table and figure it out. And I, and I just, I appreciate this. I don't, I'm concerned that we, if we were to say any action right now to direct to the next step, I don't know what the counter would be, and we could delay even further. So, and I, I know that this was mentioned by someone after the workshop, suggesting a Friday meeting, a public meeting with the sheriff. I heard that. I called the sheriff, because I hadn't heard that, and asked, and that was provided as a suggestion. I don't know if that's something we want to discuss right now and make that determination, but I just don't want us to continue to have, whatever the reason, to have misunderstandings. And I fear that if we peel out certain things here, I don't, one, know how successful it would be, and two, I don't know if we get to a point where we finalize a deal. I mean, if we're all in the room together and we want to present the 80/20, I mean, I think that's, we can, that's a great place to start the discussion. So that's, I'm not comfortable making a decision on this to just extend the going back and forth. I'm all about making a decision, but I want it to be with all of the correct people and the understanding, and allow us to kind of get a sense of what that, what the differences are. I know, like I said, Mrs. Brown pointed out one, but I just think that that, times are ticking, and we don't have any more time. So that's, that's my feedback. Mrs. Brown?
I pointed out one very important one, but several other ones also. And you're right, times are ticking. The current contract runs out June 30th, and I think what we're talking about here in this contract right now are the current resource officers we have and moving that forward. And we're talking, I mean, and I, and I just got this too, but the argument that the superintendent made, and it's made in the public, so, you know, we all know what it is. We all know what's going on the table. I don't know if the sheriff is listening, but he surely can, you know, hear this back. He's making a proposal to make it more equitable in line with what the other, because that was something I questioned too. Why do we have three supervisors for 11 officers? What do they do? I'm not sure, but at least this is a starting point, a starting point for the officers we have right now. I don't think there's any argument that we want to continue with the sheriff for next year for these officers. The contract expires on June 30th. I think we've wasted a lot of time already. We need to move this one forward, and I think if we can say, okay, you know, Mr. Superintendent, take this there, make this a starting point, let's see how you, because, I mean, if the sheriff insists that we all have to sit down, I said, I suppose we would then have to bring the county commission in too, because the county commission, I mean, the sheriff doesn't have full authority over the budget, he says. He says it's the county commission. The superintendent can't do a contract on his own. We have to approve it. So if everybody has to be in the room and everybody has to approve it at once, then I guess we're going to have to have a meeting that we have the county commissioners too, because does, the sheriff can't approve, what, $180,000 amendment to his budget? I find that kind of surprising.
This is Caroline.
Yes.
Go ahead, Caroline. Mrs. Zucker.
Hi. I would like to know what the recommendation is from the superintendent. Todd, could you restate that, please?
Yes, my recommendation to the board is that we send a counteroffer to the sheriff that is based on our current contract, and to contract with him for 10 officers, 10, two sergeants, and for us to bear 80% of the cost, specifically $1,640,000. That is my recommendation.
I would move forward your recommendation.
And, I mean, we're not, we're not voting on the contract. We're just telling you to go forth and negotiate, correct?
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Hardy?
Well, I think at this point, you have several ways you can proceed. You can give direction to the superintendent. I suppose you could approve the contract, but of course, that, that is premature, probably. But you could direct the superintendent to make that offer, if you will. You could defer action on that and bring it up at, if the board believes it needs more time to consider it, at a future meeting, either one that's scheduled, or schedule a meeting. Or you could schedule a meeting, as Mrs. Brown is discussing, with not only the board but other individuals whom you would choose to select. But before you make any vote, you need to give the opportunity to the public to comment.
Thank you.
Well, again, this is Caroline Beck. I think we've wasted enough time. We've tried to deal, we've tried to work in the sunshine, and we've tried, and so far, nothing is happening. I think that we should take this motion and move forward with it. I mean, enough is enough. We've been jiddling around with this now for a couple of months, and it just seems to get worse, back and forth. He said, she said, they said, no, I don't want to do it. I'm tired of it. The community's tired of it. We need to make a decision and move on, because the safety of our kids in August depends upon the motions that we make now, and we cannot afford to waste.
I'm, I'm not quite sure where she was at. My understanding is that we're giving direction to the superintendent to negotiate with the sheriff. We're not deciding on the contract. There's a contract he's brought forward to us, but it's not a final contract at this time.
Correct.
It's a starting point for negotiation.
But it should be done, the negotiations should be done between the superintendent and the other parties. It should not be done between the school board members and the other parties, because the superintendent is our COO, and he's the one that runs the district based on our policies.
And that's what the contract currently states in Article 10, that it's the superintendent and the sheriff that work out the problems, not the sheriff and the board. I mean, if the sheriff wants all elected officials in the room, then, then we're going to have to call county commissioners in too, and I suppose the administrator. But this part of the contract about the current officers, I mean, we're even doing things to lower the cost even further for the sheriff. Hopefully, I mean, and, you know, I applaud you for putting yourself out there again. Maybe we'll get shot down, but at least we're trying. And that's what I heard when I listened to that meeting last week. The sheriff said he wants to work with us. The sheriff said he wants to help us move forward. The sheriff said he wants to continue the program at our middle and high schools, and the sheriff said he wants to help us establish the new program and fill in any empty spots, but he wants some warning on where those empty spots are. I mean, I mean, I wasn't at the meeting. I mean, that's just what I, you know, got back. I mean, I wasn't able to, but that's sort of what I heard from this, and I think this is in line with what he said. Now, if, you know, you've got other plans that you, you know, to do something else, you know, I think this, we at least agree on what we want to do, I think, on the sheriffs, SROs that are currently hired right now. And there's some other issues on some other things, but, I mean, I think we, time is ticking, and the current contract expires June 30th. Now, we're not going to be putting any kids in danger. School doesn't start until August 13th, but at least we move forward on this one, where we think we've got much more agreement. And I think this is in line with what the sheriff said, and if the sheriff can't negotiate with the superintendent, and we all have to come in and bring the county commissioners in to say, okay, we'll agree to this, well, so be it. You know, maybe we can try to find a meeting where, and I guess July is where we'd have to go unless we called something earlier, but I'm sure they...
Excuse me, Shirley, I have to interrupt you, because you don't stop, as you give me an opportunity to talk.
And Mrs. Zucker, excuse me, Mrs. Zucker.
What guarantee?
Mrs. Zucker, there are...
What guarantee?
Excuse me, there are other people who also want to speak as well, so I want to give them an opportunity, if you don't mind.
Just let me finish this, please. I've, we've had so many things going back and forth, what the sheriff agrees to, what the sheriff says. I, I don't know what to believe anymore, so when you tell me that this is a contract that's in the makings, I don't know whether to believe it or not, because we've had some in the makings before, and nothing's come of it. So that's why I'm saying we should just move forward on our own.
I don't know.
I'm sorry, I would need, well, Mrs. Goodwin, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for patience.
Well, I, I think that we should go forward with the city of Sarasota and negotiate with city of Sarasota and the city of Northport. We've already done Venice, and I think we need to counter an offer with the sheriff. Some of the terms and conditions, I'm concerned about too, because there are many things that are left out in the new contract that were in the old contract, and I think we need to go forward with that. If we require another meeting, I'm willing to come, any time of the day or the night. I'm not going out of town anymore, so, you know, whenever you want to call a meeting, or if we need to call a meeting and have the sheriff here and have the county commissioner here, or whatever, I don't think we need the county commission actually here, or maybe Jonathan Lewis, but, but I'm happy to do that whenever it's necessary. But we need this resolved, because we do run out of time at the end of this month. And I think that it's imperative on all of us to get these wrapped up so that we can move forward on the other things that we're currently doing, which are so vital and important to us, being able to be in a position on August 13th to protect our, and to give the safety and security of our schools the very best that we can, and our students the very best that we can do. So I'm, I'm all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Before I make my comments, is it possible to ask Kathy to restate the motion? Because I, I kind of feel that we went astray from what the actual motion was, but maybe I, so could you restate what Ms. Zucker's motion was? Could somebody restate what Ms...
The motion was to, for the superintendent to counter the offer to the sheriff based on the current 10 officers, two supervisory positions at an 80% cost or $1,640,000 for the year 2018-19 for middle and high schools.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Always for Scribner, as a parliamentarian, you go to Ms. Goodwin. I love sitting next to her. I understand the concept, what we're trying to do, but it seems like these writing letters and back-and-forth letters, I kind of go with Ms. Goodwin on this. I think in workshops, I agree with Ms. Brown, and meetings, I agree with Ms. Goodwin. I think that we all need to, I think Tuesday's meeting, the great thing about it was, everybody got to sit down, talk, and it bridged a gap, and it was a learning experience for everybody.
It wasn't everybody.
No.
Mr. Robinson has the floor.
Yeah, I meant, it was a learning experience for everybody who was in the room. I didn't mean a learning experience for even the people who weren't in the room. I mean, it was a learning experience for the people who were there. That's what I, what I meant was, okay, I lost my train of thought. So, you know, I thought it was a learning experience for the people who were in the room, and I just think by having people in the room, we can sit down, because time is of the essence. I think that's a quicker way to negotiate, rather than us sending a letter to him and then him finding one thing out that in Article 10 that he doesn't like, and he sends a letter to us. I just think that getting everybody in the same room, I agree with Ms. Goodwin, you probably don't need the county commissioners, Jonathan Lewis and the sheriff. probably don't need the county commissioners, Jonathan Lewis and, and the sheriff would, would be good enough. And I, I think that's the proper way, if you guys want to negotiate this, rather than saying, we're going to do it based upon this contract, we're going to send this letter to him, and then if he doesn't like something, he, like, for example, if he thinks that there needs to, like Ms. Ziegler said, he thinks there needs to be a lieutenant, because you have so many people underneath him, and there's some sort of national police standards that says you should have a lieutenant for this many sergeants, and sergeant for this many police officers, and we're just going to go back and forth. I just, I agree with Ms. Goodwin, I think we should, you, you and the sheriff Knight need to, maybe with Jonathan Lewis, sit down, have a meeting, and hash this out, and maybe with the chair there or whoever. But I just think in person, you're going to be able to reach an agreement a heck of a lot quicker than sending postage stamps back and forth.
May I?
Mr., yeah, Dr. Bowden.
I believe that was one of the decision points that was made on Tuesday, the 12th. Following that meeting, I made phone calls to four individuals. I've held a meeting with Venice, our council attended, there was lots of back and forth. You'll have a contract on your addenda for July 17th. I have a meeting with the city of Sarasota, and I have a meeting with the city of Northport. The proper way to do this, and what I believe was agreed in that meeting, was that we would negotiate contracts. The last words I said to Tom Knight walking out on the 12th is, I'll give you a call, and he says, I'll talk to you soon. Those calls have not been returned. I'm prepared to go with legal counsel and sit across the table from the sheriff and negotiate a contract, and then to make a recommendation to the board that you would then publicly consider, you would publicly debate, like the contract with the other three municipalities. That is the process for this board to enter into contracts. But I can't negotiate against myself, and my phone calls have not been returned.
I don't disagree in the traditional, I mean, of the way that traditional contracts may come about. I am at the point where I, with Ms. Goodwin here, I, we will do whatever it takes to get past this. Whether we agree with it or not, it doesn't matter, because it's the end result of what we're trying to focus on, period. In my, I mean, I will be as blunt as that, is, I just, that's what needs to happen. Whether it's right or wrong, whether it's traditional or not, I will say, even on the record, Ms. Sheriff Knight did say at the meeting, and again, it doesn't matter whether we agree with it or not, that's what he said, that's how he wants to do business. He's the elected chief law enforcement officer of the community and of the county, and I say, let's get in a room and do it. Let's just get it done, move past it, then focus on all the other number of things that we haven't addressed on this area too. So, I, I don't want to delay any further, and Mrs. Zucker, I don't deny what you're saying, is that's typically how it's done. Please don't misunderstand me. I just am listening to what has been a roadblock in the past and want us to move past that to actually get some, something executed. And if it has to be done in the public, then that's fine, I'm never opposed to that anyway, and I think that the 12th illustrated that that actually ended up being more productive. I know Mrs. Brown has her on, and Mr. Hardy, unless I said something I'm not supposed to.
I, I reiterate again that I, I don't believe the way to negotiate point of a contract is having everybody in a room. I think the way to negotiate a contract is have the two people who are intimately involved with it, with their legal counsel, to sit down and make these.
I didn't have my mic on. We need to send a clear message to the sheriff. We're going back and forth because the sheriff doesn't think he should work with the superintendent. The sheriff believes he should be working with the school board. Our contract that we have says the sheriff works with the superintendent. I think that's one thing that we can do right now, is say, yes, we want our superintendent to sit down with the sheriff, work out the details, and he can, he can come up with an agreement, and he can go to his, his bosses, you know, he, or his bosses, or whoever does his budget, and say, yea or nay, we'll agree to share that. And what does their, their point of that come out to be? It's, it's what, 20% of a thousand, a million dollars?
The million sixty-four is our 80%. So, theirs would be one-fourth of that total, or 20%. So, it'd be a little north of $200,000. My math in my head, $212,000.
All right. So, yeah, so, I mean, so, after they work things out, step two would be, you know, the superintendent would come back to us and say, this is what we've got, you know, pending, you know, his board approval. His board can say yea or nay on the $200,000, you know, or the superintendent, or the sheriff will say, no, I don't want to touch that, you know, I'm not going back. But I, I would hope that we could sit, they could sit down in good conscience, and I think that's the mixed messages on who the sheriff should talk to that's causing the problems right now. The sheriff should be able to sit down with the superintendent on an equal footing and work out the contract. And that's what we're saying, we, that's what I'm saying I want right now. I think that's what the motion is on the floor that's being said right now, and that's what I seconded. That's what we're saying. We want the superintendent and the sheriff to sit down, negotiate this, and bring it back to us.
So, they have a motion, a second. I know Mr. Hardy, and then Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention a conversation that I had with the sheriff's legal staff in the aftermath of the meeting on the 12th, because there had been an issue raised about, and perhaps there was some misstatement, but about whether the sunshine law would apply to any negotiation, so I did not believe it would among staff, and spoke with the sheriff's legal counsel, who agreed that that was not what was intended to be conveyed, that a staff meeting was not a sunshine meeting, but reiterated to me the sheriff's position that he wanted to meet either in a board meeting or in a public meeting with the board. So, I'm pointing that out, perhaps as explanation as to why the superintendent hasn't heard back, potentially. Of course, we're talking about negotiating a contract, and that, any contract has at least two parties. So, certainly it's appropriate for you to give direction to the superintendent as to what the board's position is. And that's the motion, and you can do that. What the response to that will be, of course, is out of all of our hands. So, we, we may be looking at a, I mean, in a typical negotiation, there would be a response back. This may not be that case, given that the sheriff has indicated he wanted to deal with the board, I suppose. I, I don't know, I don't control that, and no one here does. So, I'm just pointing out to you what has been told to me so that you have this, that information.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodwin.
Today is June 19th. We have a very few days to get this done. I do not believe that the sheriff will negotiate with the superintendent. That being said, we have to look at Plan A and Plan B. And, you know, countering would be Plan A, another meeting would be Plan B. I don't know that Plan A will take place, according to what I have heard from, from you, and what I have gathered from the lack of communication in the last week. I think that we are put in that position of making a decision, and we need to make some decision today.
Mrs., I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson.
Still trying to wrap my head around what the motion is, so I guess I ask it this way. Dr. Bowden, is your interpretation of the motion is that when it says that you would go and negotiate, do you interpret that to mean that you will take this proposed contract that you have here that's marked 2018-19, that's from the school board, and mail it to him? Or are you interpreting this to mean that you would sit down and meet with the sheriff in public, or I guess the sheriff only says it wants to be public, in a way that's mutually agreeable and negotiated? How are you interpreting this motion? So, I can understand, since I still can't get my head around what the motion is, is, I mean, I understand the words, I just try to understand the effect of it.
I believe that the correct response is both at the conclusion of the meeting, if this motion would pass, I would send in both an email and written communication to the sheriff that says that at today's meeting, I was authorized to make this counter. I would submit to him the counter, and then I would ask for an opportunity to meet and hammer out differences between his proposal and our counter. So, it would be both, submitting this contract to him and a request to meet.
And if he says, I, I only want to meet in public, is that, with, whether he's, I haven't heard him say with the board, but Art Hardy, Tuesday morning, I just remember, Tuesday meeting, I remember him saying in public. So, whether in public, with the board, however he wants to, is that a deal breaker for you?
I have no problem meeting with him with audio, video, publicly noticed, media presence. We just need to get in the same room, and we need to talk this out.
All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Brown.
Hi, this is Caroline. Hello?
Caroline, hold on one second. Mrs. Brown has the floor, and then I'll let you know when you're recognized. Mrs. Brown.
Should we tentatively plan a meeting for the 26th? I mean, I'd like to see the superintendent and the sheriff sit down and talk, because I don't think we should be negotiating items on, on a, on a contract. But we hear, we hear background, Caroline.
Yeah, Caroline, I'll let you know when you're recognized.
You know, so should we plan something on the 20, you know, 26 is a week from today. The Friday meeting that we talked, you know, the sheriff and I talked about, Friday's, the school districts are shut down on Friday, we don't, it wouldn't have been convenient. I mean, so should we look at the 26th? I'm available.
May I point out that the third of my three meetings with the cities is on the 26th, and it might be an opportunity to close those contracts also, if you have a regularly noticed meeting where action can be taken. So, meeting on the 27th or 28th would allow us to present to you contracts from Northport. I believe we're ready to go now on Venice. I believe we'll be ready to go with Sarasota at the conclusion of the meeting tomorrow. We're meeting on the 26th. Currently, that meeting is scheduled from 9:00 to 10:00. I know Art has superpowers, but I don't know that we could have a contract ready for you that afternoon, but possibly the following day, and certainly by Thursday, the 28th, we could have documents from the other three negotiations.
Well, I, just to remind the board, and I certainly don't want to be the person to stop any of this from happening, but I am out of the state next week.
That's right, which you did notify us of in well advance, to be fair, on the record.
Yes. But certainly, certainly, no, you can't, can't do that. But if the contracts need to be amended slightly, I mean, that can get done, and if you're having a meeting to discuss with the, with the sheriff, if that's what's happening, you know, I would always like to be there with you, but I don't want to slow things down. And we can get, we've got the Venice one at least back to them for their review. I haven't gotten final sign off, but I expect that. Sarasota, we can get done, hopefully, in the next two days. And Northport, if it's along the same lines, will not take long.
So, you, you're saying you want to-
Now, when will I be recognized? Because Shirley is speaking again, and I-
I was asking the superintendent to clarify what day he was saying, what he said about when we could meet. So, can we ask him for clarification on that?
Yes, please, Dr. Bowden, can you clarify?
Yes, I have a meeting scheduled with the city of Northport on Tuesday, the 26th, and so as you contemplate a meeting on the 26th, my recommendation would be to either consider the 27th or 28th to allow me to bring whatever work product comes out of that meeting with Northport.
Mrs. Zucker, you are recognized.
I would like to call a question.
Okay.
Doesn't need a second.
Doesn't.
But you do have to have public comment, or the opportunity at least for public comment before taking a vote.
Would anyone from the public like to speak on the motion before them, or us, excuse me? Seeing none, if the motion, the maker of the motion can restate the motion, please.
It's been too long, and it's been restated two or three times, so it's, Jane, could you restate the motion for me, please? I'm at a graduation for my granddaughter, and I'm trying to do this.
I move to have the superintendent, Dr. Bowden, counter an offer to Sheriff Tom Knight for the calendar year 2018-2019 for middle and high schools to reflect the current population of 10 officers plus two supervisory officers at an 80%, 20% split, or $1,064,000 as presented.
Could it be a voice vote? And I'll do roll call, so all those, Mrs. Brown. Mrs. Zucker?
Yes, I.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion passes by the zero.
So, should we also try to plan a follow-up meeting, as the superintendent suggested, on the 28th? Hopefully, he can come forward with a-